I don't. Called to order our March 18th Cary Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. We have a fairly easy agenda tonight, and so hopefully we can get through it expeditiously. First thing I'd like to do is adopt the agenda, amend if possible. Do we have any changes to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve as stated?
So moved.
Second? I have a second. We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we need to approve the February 18th regular meeting minutes. Do we have any modifications to those? Okay, I'd like to point out that Mr. Miller had a fairly brilliant idea.
You sound surprised.
Why don't you tell us what your idea was? You can explain it better than I can, because it really made sense.
Well, one of the things we have done recently, the town used to mail us all of these things in paper, and it was decided that there are more efficient ways to do that, so those of us who want to now print them out at home. And the way that the web version of the meeting minutes come out, they include the staff reports, and they can get rather lengthy, so our wonderful Board Secretary Shelley Kirk has said that she will mail us these in another form in the future, so for those who want to print them out, we can use less paper, which is good for the environment, I guess.
I may do that. And I will point out, those of you that have tablets, you can download it into the tablet. You know, so I'm not doing it tonight, because for some reason, the download didn't work tonight, but if you want to save the paper, use one of the tablets.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the February...
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor of the motion as stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to move directly into our public hearing process, and before I do that, I want to maybe highlight a couple aspects of how we administer this process. We're going to start with our member of our staff giving a presentation at the podium to my left, to your right. Following that presentation is going to be largely fact-based and reflect a set of information we require for the town. We then give the applicant 10 minutes to present their aspects, their view of the case. And once they've finished with their presentation, I'm going to open the public hearing, and each speaker has five minutes to speak to us. I'm going to ask them to queue up in this area over here with the reserved signs on the chairs, and when you're ready to speak, come on down to this stairway here. And when you're ready to speak, come and speak to the podium on my right and your left. You'll notice there's a little black box on it. When you start, there's going to be a green light lit for the first four and a half minutes. You're going to see that green light. After four and a half minutes, it's going to turn yellow, telling you you have 30 seconds left. After five minutes, it will turn red. At that point in time, I'm going to have to ask you to conclude. We also ask you to give a speaker card to our clerk, and I believe you have the speaker cards there for them to fill out. And after we have no more speakers wanting to address us, then I will close the public hearing, and we will go into questions. I ask you to be concise. If you have multiple people that share the same view, maybe elected a spokesman, and please be aware of the fact that, right now, this is our chance to listen to you, so we're not probably going to question you, and I ask you not to speak to one particular member of the board, speak to all of us. With that said, I'm going to open the public hearing, or I'm going to open the case on REZ 12, or 12 REZ 26, which is the Chatham Point PDD Amendment. Ms. Bierman?
Good evening. This is a rezoning request that was presented to you at your last meeting in February. As you recall, at that meeting, there was a 4-4 split vote, so there was no recommendation. And just as a little background to why we're back here this month, that meeting actually, ideally should have been a public hearing due to the proposed parking modification that you discussed. We're bringing this back to you tonight for a public hearing at this time, before we go on to the Town Council, to ensure that the process will be as clean and smooth as possible. And also, since the last meeting, the applicant has made some additional changes in response to your comments, so we'll be able to present those to you as well. This is a vicinity map that shows the location of the property. It's at the northeast corner of West Chatham Street and Old Apex Road. This shows the boundary of the Chatham Point PDD District. Phase 1 is currently developed with 196 multifamily units per the PDD master plan. The Phase 2 area is currently undeveloped, with the exception of an existing storm pond that serves both phases, and the Phase 2 area is the subject of the rezoning request. This table summarizes the existing and proposed PDD conditions. The applicant has proposed two changes, as you can see in this table. The proposed streetscape was increased from 15 feet to 20 feet with the decorative fence, which is a slight reduction of the streetscape reduction that they had requested. And the PDD text related to building height was also changed to reflect standards applicable to non-residential zoning districts, with the maximum height of 54 feet and some limits on the percentage of the building that would exceed the 50-foot mark. The applicant has also proposed to reduce the requested parking reduction percentage from 20% to 16%. And this just shows the existing land use plan designation of mixed use. As I mentioned, this was a public, this is a public hearing. Notice of the hearing was sent to the property owners within 400 feet, was also posted on the property, and published in the Cary News as required. To date, there have been, well, there was no protest petition received at the Town Council Public Hearing. There were no speakers at the Town Council Public Hearing, other than the applicant, and, as I mentioned, there was a tie vote of 4-4 at your last meeting, when this was This concludes staff's comments, and the applicant is here to speak.
Excellent.
I'm Kevin Johnson. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Phillips Development Realty. We're a North Carolina formed and successfully expanded development company. The founder, Don Phillips, and myself grew up in eastern North Carolina. We have deep family roots in this Tar Heel State, and this project is part of our strategic plan to continue growing our North Carolina development activities here. Our company has developed several Class A apartment community offices and recreational facilities in the RDU and Charlotte areas in the past 15 years. For example, we currently have a 300-unit apartment complex under construction in Research Triangle Park, with our first units delivering in May of this year. Our company goals are aligned with our slogan, "We create communities and connect people." We are the developer and manager of the existing 196-unit Swift Creek Community that is part of the Chatham PDD Phase 1 and adjacent to this property. We hit a home run with Swift, as it has stabilized with families with diverse housing needs. We have created a sense of community with Swift, with many resident activities tied into the local community. For example, the Cary Mayor and police members recently attended our Children's Safety Day, which was concluded with the release of balloons to pay respect to the families who lost lives in the recent Connecticut tragedy. We have greatly improved Apex Road with lighting, street widening, and streetscape. Our Swift Creek residents have taken advantage of these improvements, as they walk their dogs and access existing conveniences in the area. Our proposed mixed-use Chatham Point development will take this area to the next level, and we see as an important catalyst for growth and rebirth in this area. We have extensive experience in developing and managing mixed-use projects. In Tampa, we currently manage a 100% occupied mixed-use development with 11,000 square foot of retail and office attached to it. Chatham Point has the same potential. We envision Swift and Chatham as an area where residents can walk to conveniences and amenities, thus reducing traffic congestion in the area. In January, the Cary Town Council approved a comprehensive plan amendment, which changed the future land use plan designation of this property from commercial to mixed use. We believe this is significant, as it expresses the town's desire for a very, for this very type of development, we are now requesting on this parcel, which can only be accomplished through a PDD amendment. The mixed-use designation encouraged commercial and residential uses on the same parcel in order to, among other things, facilitate pedestrian activity and decrease traffic. The goal is to also, is also reflected in other comprehensive plan policies, and will be furthered if our request is approved. Our development team is experienced in mixed-use communities, and we've already invested greatly with the town of Cary to make Chatham a reality. Our plan is to integrate Phase 2 of Chatham into the overall growth plan for the city of Cary. At this point, I will turn the floor over to other members of our team, who will go through some of the modifications and address the concerns that you had during our last meeting here. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Swartzkopf. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to come back before you this evening to discuss the project. Following the last meeting, we met with staff to discuss the concerns expressed by the Board, and have made revisions to the PDD document as discussed by Ms. Bierman. We previously sought a reduction in the streetscape from 30 feet to 15 feet along the property frontage. We're now seeking a reduction to a minimum of 20 feet, and the drawing that's going around to you now is page 18 of the PDD document, but I also thought I'd print it out, just so you could see it. The dimension actually varies from 20 to 35 feet in width, with the widest portions occurring at the intersection of Old Apex and West Chatham. In addition, to enhance the streetscape, an architectural wall with masonry columns and decorative pickets will be installed. Ground-level retail and commercial uses are proposed for the Old Apex frontage, providing public connectivity to the streetscape, thus activating the thoroughfare. The PDD document has also been revised to note that the building height provisions are consistent with the Town of Cary LDO, specifically Table 6.1-2, which allows a building height increase of one foot for each foot of additional setback provided, with a maximum building height of 54 feet. At the closest point on the Old Apex roadside of the project, the building will be situated approximately 81 feet from the rideaway, and approximately 61 feet from the rideaway along West Chatham, as depicted on the drawing that we handed out to you, providing more than enough distance to support the height increase from 50 to 54 feet. While the maximum height requested for Phase 2 is 54, it's important to note that only a portion of that building reaches that height. Approximately 29% of the building will be 54 feet in height. 17% of the building will be between 50 and 54 feet, and 54% of the building will be less than the 50-foot threshold. The tallest portion of the building is located at the intersection of Old Apex and West Chatham Street, the furthest position from the existing Phillips-Swift Creek Apartments.
My name is Ronald Stevenson with Ramy Kempin Associates, and Ramy Kempin Associates prepared a parking demand study to demonstrate that adequate parking would be provided for the site with a, with the 16% requested reduction. And the site includes a mixture of residential, retail, office, land uses, which are complementary from the standpoint of parking demand times. Each of these uses have a different peak parking demand time during a day, and as a result, the number of spaces required are lower than the town's requirements, if you look to each use individually. The peak parking demand for the property, for the site, is 130 spaces, and that occurs at around 8:00 PM on a typical weekday. The town's requirement was for 157 spaces, and there are 133 proposed for the site. The, as I said, the peak parking demand time for each of the uses occurs at a different time of the day. For example, the residential parking requirements are much higher late in the evenings and very early in the mornings, before folks leave and come home from work. During the day, the office component has a much higher parking demand, and then in the evenings, when the folks leave work to go home, there are basically little or no requirements for office parking. So those complementary uses are why this works out very well. Now, a couple of other things that, parking is good for several reasons. It encourages more folks to walk, and sort of discourages the vehicular trips, if you will, and encourages transit uses, carpooling, all these things that are good, as we move forward to reduce our dependency on vehicular traffic. In the event of special circumstances that require more parking than the 133 spaces provided, we did look at that, just in case that were to ever occur. There is more than adequate number of spaces available in the apartment community just to the north. We did a inventory of spaces there, and roughly about half of those spaces were actually occupied at various times throughout the day. About half of those spaces that are available next door were actually occupied. So there is adequate spillover parking in some unusual circumstance that would require it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask anybody that would like to address us to come down to the podium. Anybody at all? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this up for questions. Mr. Warner?
I guess the applicant would probably be the best person to answer the question. Of the 59 units, of the 59 units, how many are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Oh, boy, that makes... I think if I can maybe get my... What is the total? It's heavier on the ones and twos than in the threes. I think the threes seem like they're about 13% or so of the total. The ones and twos are, I think it's heavier on the ones than the twos, probably a 50 and a... Let me just get the information. Go forward, I'm sorry. So it's 34% on the one-bedrooms, and then two-bedrooms are 47%, and then three-bedrooms are 19%, is what the split is. So, and we're seeing, we're seeing quite a bit of demand at Swift Creek for, all the units are doing well, but, you know, the twos and the ones are kind of hot. There's a lot of young professionals that are looking for, you know, one-bedroom type units.
In regard to the restaurant, has it, has your firm made a final determination that that will be a coffee shop? Because the traffic or the parking study relied on the fact that you're going to have more parking based on the fact that that's going to be a coffee shop in the morning and the AM hours?
We have not committed to anything yet. That's the poll that we have taken from our residents there, and a lot of people from the surrounding areas are interested in, you know, caribou coffee-type shop at the location, but we haven't committed to anything yet.
Other questions?
Excuse me, can I make a couple of, just a couple of clarifying points related to some of the comments made? In terms of the specific number of one- and two-bedroom units, that's not something that's really addressed with the rezoning. There is, just for your information, there is a site plan that's being reviewed, and I think they're, they know what they want to present with that, to get approved with the site plan, which is where these numbers are coming from. The rezoning itself, there's not a specific commitment to specific uses. I noticed there was a comment, even in talking with the parking reduction, where a specific use of office was mentioned. There would be 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of non-residential uses, but there's not, we don't know what those uses would be at this point, and there's not a commitment to that within the rezoning. And in terms of the parking reduction, regardless of what the bedroom mix is, the reduction that is being requested is for 16%. So it would be a reduction of more than 16% of whatever that total requirement is. And that's something that's, is determined with the final site plan. So I just wanted to clarify some of those points, because there's some, a lot of discussion about the specific plan, because it is fairly far along. However, at the rezoning stage, we're talking about those general parameters that the site plan would have to meet, and if the rezoning is approved in some ways, that that's not satisfied, then the site plan would need to be modified to match the rezoning that you, that you make recommendation of, and whatever the Town Council would approve.
Thank you for that clarification. That helps. Are you okay with that? Other questions?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to go a little bit back on Phase 1. Just for my clarification, I would like to understand, in Phase 1, what was the amount of land which authorized this 197 units in Phase 1? You know how many acres were there?
That's 13 acres.
13 acres.
Yes, sir, and there's 197, because one of the units is the clubhouse, so there's really 196 apartment units there.
So in 13 acres, basically you had 200 units approximately, and now for 3-point-some acres, we are asking 60 units to be added.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm having a hard time.
The, you know, the 13 acres were used to produce 197 multifamily units, and we are asking for, you're requesting 59 family units on 3.13 acres. So the density is much, much higher.
Some of the units, the unit sizes are a little bit smaller also, in order to get that density in there. And part of the reason why we're doing that, we're, we're trying to create, we're using this project as somewhat of a new prototype for us. We're doing a lot of efficiencies with it. We, our architect is out of Charlotte, does a lot of this type of planning, where it's smaller, more efficient units, you know, utilizing a lot of things that our people are looking for today, to lower their costs, their bills, you know, their power, electric, water, sewer, and all that stuff in the units. So that's why, you know, the units are a little bit smaller than what, you know, is in the current location.
Was there any reduction in parking requirement in the earlier, in the Phase 1, or was it...
There was a 3% reduction in Phase 1, and basically what we have seen, after we've been there and the property has stabilized, is that there's, the whole backside of the property basically is very underutilized, you know, for parking. And what we were, we were trying to do was, as part of this site plan, we were going to connect the two back in the back, in case, as the parking consultant mentioned, you know, in case there's that issue, when somebody has to flow over and park over on that other side, there's a, there's a means, a pedestrian walk in order to get to it. When, in Tampa, like, we have 250 units above us right now, on 11,000 square feet. That's mixed with a lot of professional office, you know, space, and I see a changing of the guard there, basically on how it, how it works. You know, as the parking consultant mentioned, it's the morning time, the residents leave, you know, the people come in to work, you know, then they leave, and then the residents come back home. And just to give you an idea, down there, we have 44 parking spaces for 11,000 square feet in Tampa.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have several questions, one for Mr. Phillips.
I'm Kevin Johnson, Ms. Phillips.
Oh, Johnson, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The elimination of the loading berth.
Of the what?
The loading berth that's currently required. There's a loading berth that's currently required on the commercial that's eliminated. Ms. Swartzkopf, sorry. Maybe this is for you. How does that limit the types of uses that will come, or the types of retail that may come in there?
We're not really anticipating it being a limiting factor. The types of uses that they're targeting, the coffee shop as a potential use, any other types of retail, we anticipate being able to pull into the wide aisles out front and just use hand trucks to pull in and do things. It's not like it's a Dick's Warehouse or something like that, that's going to need a loading berth to undo big tractor-trailers. These will be like box trucks coming in and just doing hand trucks to take things in.
Okay, good. And one more for you.
Oh, sure.
The, tell me a little bit about the buffers and why it's going to be necessary to reduce, I mean, our current buffer standard. Why do we...
Oh, for the streetscape? Just being able to fit the project in, we had looked originally at looking at, Swift Creek Phase 1 had 30 feet. We tried to bring 30-foot down again, and just given the size of the property and the buffers that we have up against the railroad, we couldn't give the full 30 feet. So, and originally, we looked at doing 15. Then after we spoke with you all a month ago, we looked at it again. We were able to shift five more feet, but that's the most that we can get to be able to honor the other buffer up against the railroad. And so, in speaking with Mayor, we looked to see what other types of mitigation we could put, and staff suggested perhaps that we put the architectural wall with pickets in there to help separate the traveling public from the site as well. So we know that we can't give the 30 feet, but we were able to get five more and put the wall in to try and do a little bit of mitigation.
Okay, great. And I have a question for Mr. Anderson. Is it Anderson?
Just one follow-up to that. The other part is that the site is a tough site. There's a big elevation drop off the back end of it, so, you know, we're, we're doing as best we can to fit what we're trying to do there.
So the use, the potential use that you mentioned of the Swift Creek spaces, you said that about half of those spaces are open during the different points in the day that you went by there. Did you go by in the evening at all? Like, you mentioned 8:00 PM being the peak time, so was there any assessment?
Well, yeah, the peak time, yeah. The peak time for the current site would be about 8:00 PM on a weekday. I think the latest that data was collected there was probably not quite 8:00 o'clock, it's probably like 6-ish, maybe. I have to look. 5:00, 5:00.
5:00, okay.
It was 5:00. See, there probably were a few more cars to come, maybe there overnight, so the data we got was not quite half of the spaces were utilized.
Okay, thanks.
And that's just, I'm just rounding that number. It was less than half, but...
And, but did you collect it on the Phase 1 parking that was available?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then, one question for staff, and that is, the parking reduction, what is the percentage to, after which it has to be approved by Council or this Board? What does staff have the authority to grant?
Staff has the authority to grant up to 10%, and then 10% to 25% Town Council can grant.
Okay. That's all.
Other questions?
I have a couple.
Mr. Miller?
And Ms. Bierman, I don't know if you know this, or if it's for traffic, did the town's parking requirements take into account the mix of uses in a mixed use designation?
Well, the towns, we separate, that was separated out by the residential and then the non-residential, assuming like that it was all retail use.
So your requirements assumed the mix of the 7,000 to 9,000 square feet?
To the extent that specific numbers have been looked at, but, you know, at the time when a final site plan comes in, it would be looked at at this point in terms of commercial. If there were some individual uses that came in that, you know, had a parking demand that was much higher than that, then we would need to take a look at that at the time of the building permit, to see if it was a permitted use at that point.
And I think what you... And, and I think what you had pointed out is then the request is for 16% reduction in whatever that may be.
In whatever it is, yes.
So, because I think we get, as you pointed out, it is, it is often too easy to get caught up in how many one, two, three bedrooms there are, which is not what this rezoning is. And the handout we got is, although what this applicant may intend to build, the rezoning, I think, says it would allow whatever the rezoning allows and anyone could build that anytime if they went away somewhere.
That's, that's correct. And in terms of this specific rezoning, it's really, you know, limited to, you know, the building that would have 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of the non-residential uses and then upper story residential within the height limits that could contain up to the 59 units.
And those are just, I guess, again, there's some presumed mix of office and retail, but the rezoning is 17,000 or whatever the number is of non-residential.
7 to 10, yes.
Right. And I think you got the right questions. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one more for staff. Does the city have a guideline with respect to the, to the percentages of residential to commercial to business for mixed use? For example, the, the reason I raise the question is that when you take in phase one and phase two, before we had a ratio of something in the neighborhood of 228 square feet per unit, taking into account phase one. You know, now we're down to somewhere in the neighborhood of 39 square feet per residential unit. Does the city have a desired ratio between residential and commercial? Because the whole concept of, of mixed use is the live, work, play concept and it seems to diminish that when you reduce the amount of commercial and business.
There's not a specific number and that is, that is, you know, an issue that the board would need to weigh in on to, you know, to look at your, whatever your input towards that would be. We don't have a specific number. I think it's, in, in terms of the ordinance, we're looking more at, at trying to meet that intent of having a mix, but there isn't a specific number, particularly when you're looking at an area this small.
Thank you.
Other questions? No other questions, I'm going to ask if we have a motion. Or did you have Mr. Shaw? Mr. Shaw, did you have something?
No, no, it's been a ask and answer just then.
All right. Can we have a motion then?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we send 12 REZ 264 to the town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I'll just, I'll comment on my motion and say that I'm very appreciative of the work that was done to make alterations based on the input of the board. I was a little worried about the parking spaces, but looking at the actual data, it looked like about 138 spaces out of 391 were used on the north side and that's not anywhere close to half. That's, you know, very modest use of those spaces. So that parking concern is not, is not, that was the main concern coming into tonight and that's been completely alleviated. So I fully support it. I think it's a great idea.
Other comments?
My comment, I think it's a good concept, it's a good plan to have it, except I'm not satisfied with the, some of the things that are being asked. The density is very high. In the phase one, there were 20 units per acre and now, I'm sorry, 15 units per acre and the new request is asking for 20 units per acre. So density is being increased without any justification. And the same way, I don't find any justification for parking reduction or for the streetscape reduction. And because of that, I'm not going to support this resolution.
Other comments?
Yes, I really appreciate the effort of the applicant in coming closer to meeting our requirements for the, excuse me, for the streetscape and for the parking reduction. However, it still doesn't meet them and I think that it should meet our LDO requirements and therefore I'm going to oppose like I did last month. I'm going to oppose this.
Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, my concern is, first of all, I like the project. I like the vertical integration, but I do have some reservations about the mix. I'm a big fan of mixed use. I think that is a proper direction for the city to be moving toward, given the limited amount of, of developable land that we have. I would have liked to have seen more commercial, providing more opportunity for those residents who will live there to have access to more entertainment, more office, et cetera. But I think all in all, it is a good project. I think it's a positive sign that the applicant has come back in with some improvements over what they presented last time. I supported it last time and I'll support it this time.
Other comments?
I'll, I'll say, I agree with Mr. Nass's observations. It's still a one-third reduction in the streetscape. It's only a one-foot change in the building height. The, the parking reduction is not really substantive change from last time. I also agree, I think the project could be attractive. The concept of mixed use is good, but what we're looking at is a rezoning for 59 units and 17,000 of non-residential, which could be quite different than what we sort of have in our heads because this, this project is so far along. And so although it could be attractive, I think it would be much more attractive if it met our ordinances and it doesn't. So I, like last time, will not be able to support approval, recommendation.
Other comments?
Last time I voted against this, I want to commend the applicant for listening to some of our recommendations. I'm going to change my vote and vote in favor of this this time. However, I do have a couple reservations that Mr. Warren, thank you for bringing up. The, the reduction in commercial is a two-thirds reduction from minimum of 30 to a maximum of 10. That is gigantic. We have so many policies and procedures and guiding principles of what we would like to see as a community, but then for a very valid question, do we have any guiding principle on, for a mixed use square footage versus number of units, that type of thing? And to not have, I would like to see that Town of Cary as a policy, maybe look at developing something like that because it's a very, very valid point. The fact that this is a two-third reduction in commercial space is huge. That doesn't mean I don't think it's a good development for this area or a good rezoning. I don't want to use the term development, but a good rezoning. I think it's adequate. It's not perfect, but I would like to see some, some guidelines to help us and developers in the future know exactly what it is the Town of Cary is looking for when they talk about mixed use. So I will support it.
Anyone else? Well, I'm going to make a comment on your comment, Mr. Swartzkopf. The mix of uses depends very much on where you're building it. It doesn't do any good to have 40,000 square feet of commercial if you can't sell it, if you can't get 40,000 square feet of tenants to rent it. We all, I think, have spent some time in this area, having had a couple of other cases. So we, we know what this neighborhood is like. And I think based upon what I see of the area, I'm not sure that we want a whole lot more commercial that might sit there. And so I'm, I'm basically not worried about the reduced mix percentage for the commercial. I think it has to work as a package and every case is unique because of. I'm troubled by the streetscape reduction. I'm not troubled by the parking reduction because frankly, we've seen evidence in a number of cases where our parking metric maybe overstates the need in this current environment where people aren't having one car per person in an apartment. And so, and in particular sense, we've got kind of a peak load, we really have the, the optimum use of mixing here in terms of parking. When people are going to be using the commercial, they're probably not going to be at home in their apartments. And when they're in their apartments, people probably aren't going to be looking for commercial parking places. And it sounds like we got an awful lot of peak load overflow capacity in the existing projects. I don't see that the parking reduction really has any negative at all. I'm troubled by the streetscape, as several other members were as well. Streetscape is one of the things that makes Cary Cary. I, I guess, all of the things being equal, I'm willing to cut some slack in the streetscape because it's kind of a unusual lot. Where they're trying to put this in requires some fairly creative shoehorning and, and if you do a quality streetscape within these metrics, I think you can create a very quality product that is going to look like Cary. So that said, if there are no other comments, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's, let's do hands here to make sure we get this right. I have that at six. All those opposed?
No.
No.
To three. That motion carries six to three. And now our next case does not require a public hearing, so we're going to move on to 12 REZ 32 Copper Leaf PDD Amendment. And Ms. Brennan?
Thank you. This is a request made on behalf of the property owner by Glenda Toppen Associates. The property owner is Derby Downs Limited Liability Company. The request is to amend the existing copper leaf PDD by adding 5.5 acres to the project. Here's a vicinity map showing the subject property. It's located in southwest Cary, 1,700 feet west of Morrisville Parkway, immediately adjacent to the existing copper leaf subdivision on Green Hope School Road and south of an agricultural and farm use, which is owned by the Futrels to the north. Here's an aerial view showing the current conditions. The land is vacant and wooded. The project is located within the Southwest Area Plan where it's designated as appropriate for very low-density conservation residential development. The existing zoning is residential 40 and the applicant has proposed a zoning of PDD. The proposed area is shown here in pink. You can see how it relates to the existing copper leaf planned development district. With the zoning conditions associated with the amendment, the applicant has asked for similar characteristics to the existing copper leaf PDD. That would be that they would have five single-family detached dwelling units, opportunity for neighborhood recreation if they didn't do the lots. They would be proposing an addition of 23,000 square feet of open space and like the existing copper leaf PDD, there would be a minimum lot size requirement of 20,000 square feet. Property owners within 400 feet of the property were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised. At the time of the public hearing, there were no protest petitions and no speakers. Since then, staff has received two calls from neighbors who were seeking clarification on the request, just trying to make sure they understood exactly where the property was. One neighborhood, neighbor was very concerned to make sure that the existing open space in copper leaf was not being touched by this proposed amendment. The site is impacted by a stream buffer. The applicant is aware of that and the area of that stream buffer is proposed for open space. There is a proposed greenway trail, a streetside trail along Green Hope School Road. And Green Hope School Road is a future collector road. At this time, the applicant is available to offer their comments on the request.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Board, Glenda Top with Glenda Stoppin Associates, representing the applicant. I'm going to be brief. The request is to add five lots, minimum 20,000 square feet per lot. We are adding the additional open space as required by the Southwest Area Plan. And for those of you who saw the public hearing, there was at least one council member who was very excited for 20,000 footlots and was hoping that maybe they could just approve it that night, but understood it had to come before you. But I am here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? For any of those watching, it isn't because we don't care, it's because every once in a while, we get a softball. This is, this is not a tough one. If we don't have any questions, can we have a motion, please?
May I make a motion?
Mr. Nass?
I moved at the board forward case number 12-REZ-32 to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the complacency plan and all other applicant, applicable plans and is reasonable and is in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and the presentation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I'll just say, I, I did see the public hearing and I think the phrase the person you used was no-brainer, if I recall correctly, that you referred to. And perhaps not that, but I, I think it's great to see one that is consistent with the land use plan in the surrounding area.
You like no-brainer better than softball?
Yeah, I'll just make one, I saw the public hearing and I've looked at it.
I think one reason there weren't any questions is everything had been answered, both in the staff and applicant's discussion, both here and at the public hearing.
Hearing no other comments, I'm going to call this to vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
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 Brilliant, 45, 46 minutes.